And it's difficult for them. So, secondly, we talked about safety last time and the accessibility of getting to this second floor loft. And as anyone knows, when you get up in age, mobility becomes an issue. The owner, Grayden, is, he's 71 years old, and so he has some medical conditions. He has some joint pain. He has vertigo. He's claustrophobic. Does not like all these tiny spaces. And the existing loft space is not accessible to him. So it's, it's difficult for him to go up a ladder and to get to that space. He's, they've downsized their apartment in New York. They've brought some of their belongings to Roxbury. They definitely want to spend more time in Roxbury. And they, especially after this pandemic stuff, they really want to be in Roxbury and they don't want to be in the city as, as much. So, he needs this, so Grayden is a well-known writer, editor, illustrator, and he's working on a memoir. And what he needs is a place to store all of his documents, his artwork, his archived materials from years of work. And he needs easy access to get to that while he's writing. You know, he needs to be able to go to that space, dig out what he needs, and then get it back to his office in the house and, and, and work on this, this project that he's working on. And a set of code-compliant stairs would make all the difference in the world to give him the space that he needs and to, to allow that to happen. So my, my third point that I'd like to make is that Roxbury has a rich history of writers and artists, and it's part of what makes this town unique. And you have Arthur Miller, you have Styron, McCourt, Taliesse right next door, Salisbury, Gurney, Calder, which we did a lot of ZBA things on, and Larry. All of those people have worked here, and the artists that are in this town and the arts that are in this town enrich this, enrich what's here. And as a resident, speaking personally as a resident, I'm not alone in thinking we should encourage these people and encourage their work to be here. And encouraging them to use contemporary space or for, encourage them to use historical structures as contemporary space to do their work supports both the structures and their work, preserves those structures. So, all of these ideas, they're consistent with Roxbury's conservation plan and development plan. And so those are the three points, the, the non-conforming hardship, the safety, and the ability to support some people in town who, who are adding to our, our diversity here, I think is a good, is a good thing. If you, we can, I have an updated set of drawings from Julie's. I understand the one that we submitted was pretty generic of just showing, showing the dormer reduced, but I have some drawings that are more, a little more detailed if you'd want to see those.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. You have, I've, I've given you share capability, Brent.
Shared screen. Okay. Let's see. Can you see that? You see that drawing?
No.
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 Hold up. Let's see. About that one.
Yeah.
Okay. So here's our original proposed length. We're reducing the dormer. We're proposing to reduce.
Brent, we're not seeing, we're seeing a shared screen, but what we're seeing is your desktop, not the docu, not the drawings.
Great. All right, hang on.
The drawings are off to the right behind, and we've lost.
Isn't this fun?
Yeah. And you're doing it by phone.
Oh, yes. I have the paperwork here so I can see what he's talking about.
Can you see that?
No. 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 There. Got it.
Got it there?
Yep.
Can you see my cursor?
Yep.
Okay. So here we are with the original proposed length. We have modified it down to this proposed length. So this is, this will be the back of the barn, non-visible side. This is a non-street side on the back of the barn. We'll go to the next one. Here's the staircase. This shaded area in gray is the new area. This is a proposed area. And I've, I've calculated the cubic footage here of 270 cubic feet that would be proposed for this, this dormer on the back. This is existing. This is existing, and this lower part here is existing. So we just need this set of stairs for the headroom to get to this loft space up here.
Oh, I see. And there's a body.
Yeah. And there's, we have a person standing at the top of the stairs to show that. And my next one is this one. Here's, this is the door on the back of the barn. Here's the staircase going up from the first floor, and there's the three-car garage. And then this next one, this is upstairs. So this would be the loft space up here. This would be the dormer space that we're adding, proposed dormer space, just for this set of stairs. Okay? And so we've made this dormer as small as possible to create headroom. We've, it doesn't change the square footage of the building at all. It doesn't change the footprint of the building at all. It doesn't change the use of the building. It doesn't, it won't be visible from the street, and we have verbal and email approval from Historic District Commission approving it. So in the last meeting, we also spoke about reducing our nonconformity. And we have, let's see, we have some pictures of a chimney on the front of the building. Let's see if I can find this. Okay. Can you see that? Picture of the front of the building? Do you see that?
Yeah.
Yes, I see it.
Okay.
You have to open it.
You need to click on it, I think.
Or double-click.
Me?
Yeah. We're, we're seeing only a little thumbnail.
A little picture. Uh, wait, hang on. Let me get back here. Let me try this again. Nice.
I have a nice color photo of it.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay. So we have a street view of the barn. There's a chimney on the side over here. We could reduce our nonconformity by removing this chimney, but we mentioned, or we, I was talking with Wendy about removing the chimney, and I realized, we realized that this is in the Historic Commission, and we need approval to remove this chimney. So we filled out an application, and that's in the process. If, if that's part of how we want to proceed, we can remove this chimney, but we need approval to do that. So.
Brent, is the chimney non-functional?
It is non-functional, yes.
It's not connected to anything inside the building?
As far as I know, it's not connected to anything inside the building.
It just adds to the historic value.
I would say it adds to the historic value. I'd say it adds to, you know, adds some character to the outside.
Didn't you send a second picture that had a?
I do. There's a close-up, there's another close-up picture of this. Sorry. Can you see that one? Close-up picture of the chimney? Do you see that?
We're seeing the capsules again.
Not so good at this. I'm like, make sure. Out of that.
Good.
I'm getting better. So this is a close-up picture of the chimney. Same on the other side there.
Brent, if you were to remove the chimney, do you know how, how many cubic feet that would be?
I do. So if we remove the chimney, it's, okay, let me get to another point first. There, we also have, we mentioned garbage bins last time, and we have, we have a couple garbage bins. Let me see if I can do this. Bear with me. Sure. So we have a couple of garbage bins. Can you see that picture of the garbage bins?
Oh, yes.
Okay. There's, there's two, like a double garbage bin here. And if we removed the chimney and these garbage bins, it's 235 cubic feet. The dormer that we're proposing is 270 cubic feet. So there's 35 cubic feet of difference that's negligible. That's about the size of a trash can, a full-size trash can, difference between the two of them. So negligible. So, those are the points that I have. Wendy, do you have any historic, anything from the Historic Commission to add to this?
Add? Well, basically, you covered most of the things I wanted to talk about, but because this property is in the Historic District, we try really hard to keep, to protect the architectural and cultural resources in Roxbury. And being a rural community, barns were a big part of every house that was basically in the Historic District. And we're finding that the barns all over Roxbury are disappearing completely. And for, to have a, an owner that wants to put the amount of money that it takes to keep a barn afloat, plus find another use for the barn, to us is, that's heaven sent, because usually we're like begging them to keep them up, and please, can't you find a way to do this? And so we are very much supportive of keeping this barn here. And because, you know, they want to use it, or they are using it for machinery and storage, to me, the usage, although I don't, I don't really understand what, what the issues are with the barn, but the usage seems pretty much what it was, you know, 150 years ago when they built it. So it's like, basically, a barn is a tool, and it's the largest tool a farmer had, but if you don't find a use for that tool, they're all falling down. And here we have a case where somebody found a use for the tool to get all those cars off the street and use storage, and we would like to support that. In fact, we applaud the fact that they're trying to keep this barn up. And as far as the chimney goes, I polled most of my commission members, so this is off the record, basically, because we haven't met officially. If taking the chimney down means keeping the barn up and finding use for it, fine, but to us, it, it does put character there, and it's the Historic District, so why not support it? I thought, I would highly encourage you to go along with the application, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So if anybody has any other questions, usually, we have applications for anything that goes on in the Historic District, but we even decided with this, you can't see it, we don't need to if you can't see it from a public road away. So the little bump in the back did not raise any red flags to us, because if you look at barns all over town, farmers were always just adding on a piece here or adding on a piece there to make the barn work for them. So I encourage you to say yes to this application, I guess. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Questions from the Commission?
So you, so you think that the, the Historic Committee would be okay with?
Nancy, just make sure, identify yourself.
Oh, okay. Nancy Schoenholz, asking Wendy, do you think that the, the Historic Committee would be okay with?
Nancy, just make sure, identify yourself.
Oh, okay. Nancy Schoenholz, asking Wendy, do you think that the, the Historic Committee would be okay with?
Nancy, just make sure, identify yourself.
Oh, okay. Nancy Schoenholz, asking Wendy, do you think that the, the Historic Committee would be okay with taking down the chimney?
If it saves the barn, yes, you know? I mean, it's always a, I personally, I can only speak for myself legally on, on the record. I would love to see the, the chimney stay up, because I do think it adds a lot of character. It shows that the barn, you know, the accessory was a carriage barn or a horse barn, and, and there probably was a little blacksmith place in there or something, and, and it, it gives character. It shows the history, but like Brett said, Brent said, if, if we had to, we would, I would say, yes, take it down, save the barn, so. But I don't, I don't understand the effectiveness of the cubic feet, so I guess I'm, I, I would have to be educated on that in order to make a more, a more, you know, a better opinion, put it that way, so.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Well, Brent, when you said something, when you made the, oh, hi, I'm Karen, Copta member. When you said what would be left, the difference in the cubic feet would be about, what would be left if you took away the garbage bins and the chimney would be about the size of a garbage can? Can you just tell us what, is it 270 cubic feet looks like? Is it the size of a car? Is it the size of a?
I guess that would be the size of a car.
I get, we usually, I, or I, I'm accustomed to hearing about square feet. I've done, I don't really know about cubic feet.
That's exactly what was difficult about me in, in construction. We're always talking about square feet. We're never talking about the volume of, of a structure or anything like that. So it's, it's, it's about the size of a small car. It's not.
Okay. Thanks.
This is Doug Lou. Mr. Benner, if I understood you correctly, if you did remove the chimney and the garbage bin, the net would be not 270 cubic feet, but more like 35 cubic feet?
Exactly, 35 is the difference.
Okay. And the 35 cubic feet is not the size of a small car? We're talking about something much smaller, is that correct?
You're exactly right. The 35 cubic feet is three feet by three feet by four feet tall, about the size of a garbage can, a full-size garbage can.
And you, you made three points, the first being that, I think you called it a nonconforming hardship, and you, you pointed out that there's another code section, 3.10.9, which basically puts an affirmative obligation on a homeowner to correct, if, if you would, the nonconformities on their property. Not only don't make them bigger, but actually eliminate them. Is that correct? So?
I'm, I'm not familiar with that, that regulation.
3.10.9. And I'm surprised you're not, because you, you said it was the intent of the regulations, and that's exactly what the regulation says. It says it's the intent of these regulations that nonconformities shall not be expanded and that they shall be changed to conformity as quickly as the fair interest of the owners permit. So we're faced with, the regulation that you've applied for to, to have a variance says that we should not enlarge nonconformities. And going further, there's a regulation that says, and a homeowner should actually reduce the nonconformity of their own volition, of their own, you know, effort. So would you agree that a nonconforming building in and of itself is not a hardship? Would that be correct?
I, I have to admit, I'm a builder. I'm not an expert on all of the zoning parts of this, so I would love to you guys for guidance to just help me through this process, and as kind of a, a town like ours, I would work with you to just, just give me some guidance and help me through this process, and we can find a compromise to, to make this thing work. I, as far as like the exact zoning regulations, I'm just a simple builder. I, I just want some, your guidance and give me some help to, to make things happen is all I really want, so.
Your second point was that there was a safety issue, and again, tonight, you talked about the ability to access the second floor in a safe manner.
Yeah.
And I think we talked last time about the location of the staircase, in effect, rotated so that you may lose one of the, the parking areas, but you could still put that staircase within the, the building without having to enlarge it. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm sure you could. We would also lose one of the bays of the parking, which would have one more car on the street. And we'd also change the use of that building from what it is now. It's a three-car barn garage, whatever you want to call it, but we would lose one of those bays. That would change the use. We'd also have more cars on the street, and you have a landscape business right across the street with large trucks coming in and out all day long. You have a tennis court park right there also, so you have three things happening. And right now, there's a lot of people using that tennis court, because they can't do anything else. And so there's a lot of use, and one more car on the street just adds to a hazardous condition here, and.
When you say one more car on the street, are you saying that the owners cannot access their property anywhere but from pulling into this garage and, and walking in? In other words, there's no other place to drive their car onto this property? They'd have to leave it effectively on the street?
It's tight. It's a very tight space, yeah. I mean, the barn, we've looked at the, this is a survey, and the barn is literally four feet, it starts four feet into the setback, so, on the road, so.
And just, just on your third point, you, you said that, you know, we have a, a number of writers and artists, and the owner of this particular property falls into that category. Would you agree that granting a variance because of someone's occupation or someone's status is probably not proper?
I would, I would agree that he's not asking for special permission from anybody, and he's a very humble guy. I'm simply suggesting, this is all me, suggesting that as a town, we should be supporting the arts and supporting artists and this kind of cultural thing that happens around here. And I think that's a pretty, that's coming from a resident point of view and not a, not a builder point of view or anything that they've pushed me to say about them, so.
But you understand?
I would act strongly on that and say, that's what makes this town unique, so.
But, but you understand that the next application that comes down the pike is somebody who doesn't, is not a writer, is not an artist, and is not world-renowned. Are they, are they entitled to any less deference because of?
I would, I would say that's your, that's the Commission's call to me. That's not my, that's not my area.
But that's a point that you made tonight. You said that because he's this, he's a writer, or some way, that should translate into us being somewhat more lenient. That, that wouldn't be correct, would it?
I would, I would leave that up to you to decide.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Other questions?
Could I ask?
Margaret?
Yeah, I could ask a question. Have you, as you maybe can tell from, from Doug's comments, this, really, the problem is that it's almost, it's extremely difficult. I don't know what other members think. This is not an application that it would be easy for the ZBA to approve. I'm somewhat familiar with the house and the previous owner and the neighborhood. I have great sympathy for, and, and I can understand how ridiculous it must seem to you, the corner that we are stuck in. But have you spoken to zoning together with the Historic District Commission? You might do better. I mean, the underlying problem is the law, which we have to follow, the zoning regulations and the state law. And have you looked at going at it from that direction, rather than trying to get a, what would really be, I think, hard-to-justify exception to the law, much as I can understand why? And you, and you present your case very cogently, but I think, have you spoken maybe with zoning and the Historic District Commission to see if there's anything they could do in their end to make this more possible?
I spoke with John Cody, and he referred me to, to take it to, to this ZBA. So that's as far as I've got with that, and I'm just following, just following their protocol and how, you know, I'm just, I'm looking for some guidance here. I've spoken with Wendy, and she seems very supportive of it. I, I'm kind of at a loss of how, how to go forward and how to help move this thing along. I, I think it's a very small dormer on the back of the barn. We're not adding to the footprint. We're adding to the use of it. We're reducing our nonconformity as much as we possibly can without, without taking the barn down. So I, I, you know, there's a, I'm not sure what you're, what I should do, you know, to, so, I don't know. I'm kind of at a loss too.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that, that, well, I'm asking if you've looked at, you were told to come to the ZBA, and you're here, and you've, you've really been very patient, because I can imagine how infuriating this is, but I'm not sure that we're the ones that can solve your problem. But you haven't spoken, let's say, to zoning and to the Historic District Commission about this situation and whether it applies elsewhere and whether there are changes that ought to be made. You have, you haven't looked at it from that end. You haven't gone to your legislator and said, put in a special act for me. I want my dormer. This is Connecticut. You might get it.
I haven't gone that far, but Wendy, can you add to, to that?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I just don't quite understand the procedure, Margaret, and I got an inkling from you and what you were describing, but could the fact that the barn is in a Historic District be considered a hardship so that you?
Oh, please. Wendy, I love the Historic District. I do too. I tell people it's not a hardship. It's very good for their property values.
I don't, usually, I, in the past, I've been able to go, you know, if it doesn't go through zoning, a barn of any kind, I've done one on two or three barns, I usually go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and say, you know, the town plan is trying to encourage the preservation of Roxbury Historic Properties. Can you give a little, you know, better treatment to this thing, because that's what we're trying to achieve? But it doesn't seem to be the case here, and I don't understand it.
So, so, let me just add a couple of points. The one place that I do agree with you is that the imperative to retain the barns and retain the historic nature of the town does, it does run up against the provision that Doug was talking about. And I, I understand that it's hard to meet both of those imperatives. The one place that I do agree with you is that the imperative to retain the barns and retain the historic nature of the town does, it does run up against the provision that Doug was talking about. And I understand that it's hard to meet both of those imperatives. Wendy, we're very aware of the issue of the barns because we actually went to zoning because we were, our hands were tied so many times. We actually went to zoning and asked them to do something which resulted in the provision on adaptive use of the barns. So that came from us. And because we, a couple of times, we had to say no. And so we're, we're, A, well aware and B, we're sympathetic. And I, despite what the language says, I don't think the interpretation, Brent, that says, you know, eventually we're trying to get rid of all of the historic buildings. I'm, I'm not sure that you can take it to that, to that extent. I think the, well, let me leave it, let me leave it at that.
May I speak for a minute?
Wait, just let me.
This is Judith Kelly?
Sure.
Okay. I think everyone is coming from all kinds of areas. And I feel that they're very well-founded. But I think for the sake of clarity, the one thing that we should do is say, exactly why can we not approve this petition? So it's right out there on the table. Everybody knows exactly why we cannot do it.
So I think, Judith, maybe, I'm not sure this is what you're getting at, but what I would say is the law, the zoning regulations and recent court decisions have put us in a position where you have to be able to justify a hardship. And we're, and with that, as Margaret said, our hands are tied. And we haven't found a hardship that meets the criteria that we, that we can approve. And, and the, the barn can be used without the change. There is another option, which is the one Doug is suggesting. And that makes it, that ties our hands even further. So I would say if we had to zero it in to one particular point, it's the question of the hardship.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I think, just to add to that, to clarify, even, to take it down to even smaller, is that the hardship based on, based on all these recent court decisions, the only acceptable hardship to, for, to the zoning board of appeals now is that it needs to be a hardship based on topography. And nothing else is acceptable. Am I wrong about that?
Well, wouldn't the topography, being that the barn is right on the edge of the street, be a hardship? So because of the cars parked out front? Couldn't you do it on that part, on that? I don't understand the new court cases and I'm fascinated by this conversation because I haven't heard about the hardship piece before. But the topography is the fact that the barn is on the property line, basically. You know, there's no setback at all. And wouldn't that advocate for the fact that you have to build in order to get the cars off the street that you'd have to build up from the inside?
Wendy, the issue hardship is the basis of. Wendy, the hardship is the basis always, not new, of the ZBA's ability to grant a variance. It's the core of how, what enables us to grant a variance is that a hardship exists. And we're.
I would say that our other hardship is a, is a safety issue and that Graydon can't access that space the way that he needs to.
I could, I could comment on that. This is Margaret. Because I've heard safety argued in the ZBA in Washington, Connecticut and here. And in this case, and I don't think we're actually, I don't think that actually amounts to hardship legally. And also, difficult addicts to access. I have two hardships right behind me. Wendy, the, all these houses, most of the houses in the historic district are nonconforming. I would love this way of thinking. It would free me up to make my life a lot easier if I could make this kind of argument and do what I would here on this property. The safety really does, does not stand up. It's, it's not technically a hardship. And also compared to, Mr. Carter is a vigorous athlete compared to half the people in the neighborhood. So the, the, the safety issue is appealing. I mean, it, it goes to the, to our sentiments. But the fact that an attic would be difficult to access because, because of maybe the physical condition of the owner, that, that would not stand up. We couldn't make that stand up, even, you know, if we wanted to.
Didn't John Cody write, write a letter, send a memo saying that he supported, he was in support? He didn't say anything at the last meeting. He didn't address it. But I believe we got a note from him, didn't we, in your initial application?
In the initial application, he did have a note in his last meeting that he was in favor of adding the dormer.
So as much as we appreciate John's opinion, I, I think, I don't think it's relevant to our consideration.
No, I was, I mentioned it because it came up. I think Margaret had asked whether the applicant had approached zoning or any of the other commissions. And I just wanted to.
Yes. Thank, okay.
Mention that we did hear from the zoning enforcement officer that he thought, he thinks it's a good idea.
Well, he approved the, he thought the concept was a good idea. Yeah. Does, does anyone have any questions about the chimney or the the garbage shed and the approach of trying to reduce the nonconformity?
Well, I was, I was the one who wondered if we could have a trade-off there, if it was a significant reduction. But it doesn't quite get us there, even, even very small exceedances are exceedances. Plus, I mean, I, I agree with Wendy. It'd be a pity to lose, to lose the chimney. So I don't think, I don't think those efforts, which are quite creative, I don't think they add up to really helping the applicant enough, even if it's just a small exceedance. That's my understanding of our situation. I, since it's, I guess I would go back and we'll can talk about it later. I really say, you know what Dickens said, if that's the law, the law is an ass. Well, maybe the law is an ass here. We're stuck with it. But you could take a look at, you could, you know, you could take a look at the underlying regulation. Sometimes it's simpler to change that than to try to fight it or fit into a law that you just can't fit into.
I would, I think our hardship is that we're caught, the owners are caught between this place of, you're saying, reduce the nonconformity and maybe we should take the chimney down. But maybe we shouldn't because it's, because it's adding to the character and it's hardship and such mixed messages.
Let me just say, even if you add them both together, we still, I believe, have a small exceedance. And we've been told, you know, in the past, oh, six inches here or there. But we've really been told we can't do that. And so, so my, the bottom line there is it, it probably, it does not, to my mind, get you where you need to be. And secondarily, it's sort of a pity to do it. But I don't think it gets you there.
I guess my, my argument would be that in entirety, the safety issue, the removing as much nonconformity as we possibly can and the fact that we're adding to the culture in town and preserving this barn, those four things together, I think, is worthy of this project. And I guess that's, that's the basis of my, my, my point.
Yeah, it is.
A lot of people would argue that that's a, that's a valid point and something we should be doing and something we should be encouraging in this town. The shame that.
Brent, I think, I think in theory, we would all agree with you. But unfortunately, that's not the issue before us. So, you know, I think we, we've had this conversation about saving the barns. I can't tell you how many times. And I would suggest that you think about this, the provision in zoning about adaptive use. But this isn't adaptive use, as everybody said, as everybody has said, the, the use is really not changing.
Okay. Can you tell me about adaptive use? Can you tell me about adaptive use? How would that work?
It's Regulation 310.10. And I, I would give you any more than the reference point because we're not really here to give you legal advice or guidance. And I, and I just wanted to ask one other thing. You know, we've been talking about, Ms. Walker, you've been saying something about, you know, to me, it makes it seem like this barn is in dire straits, that we were trying to save the barn. I don't get the feeling that this barn is going to fall down if this variance isn't granted. Am I mistaken about that?
Well, to a degree you are because if you have visited the site, all barns need maintenance and work and roofs and whatever. And they have gone through to shore up the barn where there's been all sorts of rot. And they've been doing it for a reason to, to be able to use it. I mean, if you look around town, even in the historic district, we're losing barns like crazy. And we keep saying, please fix your barn or fix a hole in your roof or put some plastic over the top. And here we have somebody that's actually putting a lot of money into their barn to save it. And it seems like we're working against them rather than. I know you have your rules and regulations because I'm familiar with that. But it just, I wish we could find a way to say.
Be clear, there is nothing that is before us that would prevent somebody from doing the basic repairs on their barn that you speak of. In other words, shoring up, rotting siding or fixing a hole in the roof. There's nothing here that we're doing that would prevent an owner from taking those maintenance steps.
Right. But they are trying to access a second floor for storage. And the only way they have been able to figure it out is, you know, you also have to go with the, with the building regulations when you do something new. You know, I was trying to say, well, make it smaller, make the dormer smaller, lower the height. But you can't because you need a special regulation from the lip of the top step to the ceiling. And that's, you know, they're working against that hardship.
So, so I think we're starting to go around and around and around. So I'm gonna ask if there's any further questions or.
This is Judith and I have one comment. I think that going to zoning is a very important thing. We've already had Mr. Conway here at one of our meetings, if you recall. So he's very familiar with it and I think that it would be a good idea to go and to zoning and see what they can do.
I, I want to be really careful about, just about what we are or not saying because I have, it's not within our purview to say to you that zoning can fix this because I don't know if zoning can or can't fix it. And I don't want, I don't want to give you a sense that we're saying there's another solution. It's with zoning. Could be, it might not be. So.
The possibility, not a solution.
So I'm gonna, unless anyone, Brent, Andy, Wendy, have any more comments, I'm gonna close the hearing.
Just to clarify, if we close this hearing, then now that this, this is the second time back, then that's, that's the end of it as far as this application goes.
Well, I mean, I, my reading of the conversation is that we're ready to make a decision. And if that's not right, we can continue, but I don't, I don't see the point of continuing.
I think I'd like to go and talk to the zoning official there and, and work with him and see what, see what our other options are.
I think, I mean, you have the option to continue. I, I think what their option, what your options are or not with zoning has nothing to do with the decision that, that we're, I think, feeling that we're required to make. I think zoning will do what they want to do, what they can do. But I don't think it has anything to do with the decision on whether or not we think a hardship exists. I'm happy if, do, do other members of the board, do they, do you think that's correct?
Yes.
Nadette, I think what you said is correct. But I think one could talk about a process without making implications of what zoning might or might not do if a case was brought to them. Because I have no idea.
What I'm saying is that what zoning does or doesn't do is not really related to the, to a decision that we would make.
No, it's not. It does not affect the decision we have to make.
So I think. So I think continuing the hearing, I don't know, I don't know what we get, what, what the applicant or we gain by going back through all of this again. It's painful for everyone. So.
I'm just wondering, kind of late in the game, about the, the issue of safety, you know, that the idea, that the concept, that the variance runs with the land, not with the owners. And that the safety could potentially be a hardship in light of the fact that that corner has become very highly trafficked, not just during the pandemic, but because of the RRR. but because of the RRR operation there, as well as the town tennis court.
So, so I think we're in the, I think we're now in the range of having a ZBA board discussion. So let's make a decision on closing the hearing, and then let's have that discussion in, in the regular, in the regular meeting.
I move to close the hearing.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you for, for bringing your, your wisdom and your expertise.
I think we have to work on this somehow, because it doesn't seem a good way to save barns, and that is in our plan of development.
So, Wendy, what I would say about that is, our hands are tied.
I understand that from the conversation.
If anybody can do anything about this, it's either planning or zoning. We're, we're, are, we can't, we can't fix, we can't fix it.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I'm gonna leave, so.
I'm gonna call the regular meeting to order, and can the members announce, introduce themselves, identify themselves again?
Doug Lewis-
Judith Kelly, member.
Doug?
Doug Lewis, alternate.
Sue?
Suzanne Scott, alter.
Karen?
Karen Kopta, member.
Nancy?
Nancy Schoenhold, alternate.
Margaret?
Margaret Beyer, member.
Nanette Falkenberg, chair. We, we need to elect a temporary chair, again, I'm told.
I'm Nanette Falkenberg.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. Oh, excuse me.
Okay, then. All right, I'm gonna open the conversation for any further discussion we have, and then I'm gonna go around the table and ask people their opinion, and then we'll vote. Karen, I interrupted you before, so go ahead.
Oh, well, I, I think I, I said what had, what had occurred to me was that I think there's some potential of the hardship of safety in as much as it's the location, which is, is highly trafficked, and, and is now being, you know, has, was used for, I don't, you know, I don't know how many years, 25 years, for the RRR operation trucks going in and out, and, and the, and now the tennis court, you know, it's, it's, I think there may be some potential there, that, for the safety issue of getting the cars of that particular, of the Carter, you know, or the, of that property, not that owner, but of that property being able to keep those cars off, safely off the road. And I don't think that there is another access to that, to that garage. I don't think there's another way to have a driveway get in there. So I'm just raising the issue that is, maybe there's something that we can work with there.
Okay.
Just to comment on that, you know, obviously, the location of the property is unique in respect to its proximity to the tennis court, a public area, and people driving. And I think if the application were, for example, hey, I have to add on to my garage space to get my car off the street, because there is this much traffic, if that's what the application was, I think maybe, you know, that argument would have more legs, you know, we gotta get cars off the street because it's a busy corner. But here, you know, that's not what this application is. It's, I gotta build a dormer on the back, sort of set of stairs that go upstairs, and I don't want to do it where I could otherwise do it, because I may or may not lose a parking space. I, it's, it's, to me, it's too, too remote, the issue of safety and being in that proximity to what's in front of us today. But I, but I agree, there could be situations where, where a property is located in relation to high-traffic areas might be a consideration.
Sue, you've been very quiet.
I have been, I've been listening a lot, because unfortunately, I have to agree that it would be, I would love to come up with a legal reason that we could use, but at this point, except for maybe that safety area, I don't think it works, because there are alternatives, only it would require probably losing one of the parking spaces within the building. And I certainly would hate to see anything happen to the barn, it's a beautiful barn. But I don't think we can, that's not a justification for us to approve it either.
Nancy?
I, I agree with what's been said. I cannot figure out a way to legally approve an increase in the nonconformity of the building. And I don't see it, I don't see a safety issue at this point, because the cars can get into the garage, and they can be off the street. So I, I can't buy into that thinking. So, that's my thinking.
Okay, Karen? Karen?
No, I, I hear you. I still, you know, well, like, I'm not differing, different from other people on the board in, like, wishing we could find a way.
Okay. Margaret?
Just to repeat, there really, the applicant has not shown a hardship, and the effort to reduce, that possibly could reduce the nonconformity came up short, didn't really reduce the nonconformity. And I don't, I don't see any way that I, we could approve the application under the current law.
Judith?
Well, I agree that under the law that we have, there's nothing that we can really do. The applicant has certainly tried to, you know, conform with what we're working with here, but it just seems to be impossible, you know? In the old days, he'd just go in and put up the staircase, you know? But nowadays, he's not allowed to do that. And, and then there's new things about the hardship, and I feel very, very unhappy that we have to say no to this applicant.
So I would say ditto, all of that. I think my two compelling, the things that most compel me are the fact that there is another, even though it's not ideal, there is another option, there is another way to accomplish this, and the lack of hardship is, I don't see any way that we can do this. So, now Doug, did, did you, did you make your comments?
I think, yeah, I, I think what I've said has already been said, so I'm, I'm fine. I, I don't see the, I, I do credit what Karen was saying, that there may be situations where, like I said, where the location of a property in proximity to properties might, safety might be a concern, but I don't think this is, this is the case.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. I would, I would entertain a motion.
You want me to make a motion? I move, I move that the zoning board of appeals reject this application on the grounds that there is no legal hardship.
I second it.
Judith seconds. Okay, Julie, I think we have to go around, is that right?
Yes, you have to go around to those that are seated. They each have to state whether they said yes or no.
Okay. Doug? Oh, oh no. Yes, you're seated. Doug?
Yes, I, I vote to deny the application for the reasons stated by Margaret, that there was no shown hardship.
Karen?
I, I, I vote to deny on the basis of, yeah, on the basis of the, that we haven't seen a hardship that we're able to accept.
Margaret?
I approve my motion. Margaret, again?
Do, just give, give your reason.
I, me, I just, the reason is that, that, as I stated in the, in the motion, there is no hardship, no legal hardship that we can recognize as the zoning board of appeals.
Judith?
I have to vote to deny this application because of the client not being able to show any hardship as stated by the rules and regulations that are applied to the board of zoning appeals.
I also vote to deny the application because the applicant has been, been unable to meet the legal definition of a hardship as we have to address it in 2020. So, Brent, Andy, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time. We know you're just, you're just following the regulations, so it's okay.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks for all the time and energy and effort you put into it. And we all, we all, we all tried.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't throw away your plagues.
So sorry.
Okay. Let's move on to the election of 2020 officers, and I am going to, Barbara Henry needs to appoint Judith's replacement, replacement. So I'm going to recommend to Barbara, bye.
Bye, Barbara. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
I'm gonna recommend to Barbara that she appoint Doug to fill the vacancy that Judith's resignation is going to create. And I think what we should do is go ahead tonight and elect a chair, and then once Doug, once Doug is seated as a full member, we can then go ahead and elect a vice chair.
You do the time frame?
There she is. Next board of select, Barbara apparently does this, is at a board of selection meeting. Julie, I believe the next one is in June, is that right?
It is, it's actually on June 2nd.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, that's right up, up now, yeah.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to nominate, for nominations for a chair.
I'd like to nominate Nanette Falkenberg as chairman, or chairwoman, I'm sorry, of the zoning board.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Other nominations? No, hearing none. I call, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? I suppose I should abstain.
You can abstain for the record.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to abstain. The president votes for himself when he goes into the voting booth.
He votes for himself by mail.
Send us a letter.
Wants you to know he votes by mail, although no one else can. So, moving on, thank you, by the way, I appreciate, I appreciate your confidence in me. And hopefully, at some point, Judith, are you still here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hopefully, at some point, we'll all be together again, and we, we will invite you to, to give you a proper send-off, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You all will be missed.
Yeah.
It's gonna be very strange not to have my ZBA.
You're always welcome to visit.
Oh, you know, watch what you say.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing special meeting of April 30, 2020.
I, I move that we approve the minutes, and actually, I thought they were very well done.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie, and I second the motion.
Nancy seconds. A discussion, changes, amendments? All in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carried. And, oh, there you are, Julie, you've been-
Well, I just felt bad, I'm like this the entire meeting.
Okay, any other business? I have one item. It's not business, it's just a, a thought, which is, I, I think we're all struggling with our role, and the limitations of what we are and are not able to do going forward. And I think it would be, it would be good for us to, during a regular meeting, have just have a conversation about it. And I'm not sure there's much we can do about it, but I think it's worth at least talking it through and trying to figure out exactly what constraints are upon us, and whether we have any more leeway than we think we do at this point.
Okay. Nanette, this is Margaret, I, I've been thinking of the same lines, and I also think it'd be helpful if applicants had some notion of what a hardship was before they come up here. I mean, we're explaining, it seems to be basics, that they should learn, I know we don't want John interpreting- don't want John interpreting the law, whatever, but they shouldn't come up here with just all that they've heard from zoning is it sounds good, go talk to ZBA, and apparently with no understanding of what a hardship is supposed to be. And, you know, be kind of, I can see why they're upset. They'd probably be upset anyway, but I'd like to, when we're talking about our role and what we're doing, I think it would also be good if applicants were better educated on what the law is at the time, and that we don't have to start explaining everything from, you know, from the very beginning.
Judith?
That's a very good idea, Margaret, but isn't there something in the new applications that refers to what a hardship is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Reasons for doing the, the whole cover packet was to be more explicit about what a hardship is, what you have to, what you have to prove. I think people aren't reading it. And.
I thought that we spent a lot of time on that.
We did. But Doug had, Doug has generously, I think, he's now gonna put his head in his hands, asked her to have a conversation with potential applicants before. Julie, what are you saying?
I, no, I, I think that's a great idea. I actually met this current applicant early one day. I went in early to meet with him, to go over the application with him, and explained, and referred to him in the packet what the hardship was. And he chose not to go down that road.
That was this applicant, Julie?
Yes.
Very stubborn.
Well, but the, but, but I, I also, is everybody else echoing, or is?
Yeah.
Everyone is.
Well, that's, that's reassuring. I also agree very wholeheartedly with, with the premise that I believe Nanette was proposing, which is that if there's only like one little tiny thing that we're allowed to, to grant a variance for, then it becomes kind of a very kind of frustrating and meaningless exercise to meet as a board, you know, like, to hear these, so that's how I'm feeling, anyway. So I would very much like to have a conversation amongst us. But I also wonder if we, can we have a very frank and open conversation, or if it's on the record as a meeting, do we have to kind of be cautious about what we say?
Yes, we're public meeting.
What, what do you want to say?
What I want to say is that I, I just wonder, what are we doing? Like, if, if the only thing that we're allowed to advance, to grant a variance for is if, you know, somebody's sitting on a ledge and hemmed in by topography, is, is in fact that the only reason that we can accept? In which case, if they don't have that as a hardship, I mean, I guess we can't stop them from coming to plead their case, but I, I just, I, I personally feel very, you know, frustrated by, by our situation.
I, I, I can, I can understand it. What I meant was, I doubt we'll be saying anything that the public couldn't hear.
Oh, well, I don't know, because, that's my question, I mean, because they brought up something, I can't remember what it was last week, I think everybody, I always said, oh, we can't talk about that now, we're in the public hearing.
No, the reason we couldn't talk about it, Karen, was, it had already been adjourned.
Oh.
Okay. So Doug, Doug said that he was, Doug, why don't you say what you said you were willing to do, so I don't mistake you?
Well, I think, I think the discussion was that, and it gets to the issue of how limited our role is, that some of these applicants, I think they understand that, but then they go ahead anyway, and, and I call it the aw shucks presentation, they come in and basically say, oh, you know, I'm only doing this, and, you know, everybody else has done it, and, and then we spend an inordinate amount of time having to explain regulations, which I think they already understand. And if it's not improper, either in my role as an alternate, or a member, or whatever I might in the future be, if an application comes in, I would be happy to call the applicant and just try to get a sense of if they understand what a hardship is, obviously not pass judgment or lean one way or the other, but just try to inform them that, you know, our role is very, very limited, and if they decide to go forward, they better be prepared. You know, a lot of times, I like to explain, you know, here's, here's a dormer, and here's these beautiful windows, and that's really not what we're here for. We're here to determine whether you have a hardship or not, and perhaps get the applicant to be focused on that. And, and maybe that'll shorten our conversation when they come in before us.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah. That'd be good.
No.
What?
You said no.
I said no to Charlie.
Oh, Charlie's the cat.
My cat wants to get fed.
Okay. One more thing that I would like to have as part of that discussion is to talk about how long we let these conversations go on.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, I, I feel like sometimes I bend over backwards to make, to make people feel like they've had a hearing, but we do get into very long conversations past the point where we think we know what we're gonna do. So I would like some direction from the committee, the board, during our conversation, about how long we want to let these go on, because we're spending a lot of time, even though, I think, in this one, I think mid, mid, certainly midway through this conversation tonight, we knew how this was gonna turn out. So, all right, so we will, we will schedule such a conversation, and Julie and Doug will work together to, to make sure the applicants are fully informed about, about a hardship. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Well, Judith, I have a question. We agree that we're going to have a meeting to discuss what's going on with, with the ZBA in general, and, and the constraints that we're operating under?
I think we did agree. I mean, I heard agreement. Yeah. So we can either do it, I, I'm assuming we'll still be zooming next month, we could do.
We're probably gonna be zooming through the end of September right now.
Really?
Yeah.
So if we're gonna do this soon, we're gonna do it by Zoom, or we're gonna wait until we're all together? I think we should start the conversation on Zoom and see.
Yeah.
See how it goes.
I don't know about anybody else, but I'm feeling a lot of frustration, in a way, because I understand the whole regulation, but, because the last people that had the same problem with the, with the property setback, they, we were, we were able to grant them the variance after they modified their plan, because they got rid of prior barrier. And it's frustrating to see an historic building go through the same kind of problem, but they don't have anything to fall back on. And I, that's, I guess I'm starting that discussion of, it's difficult. I mean, I'm a newest member, really, so I have least experience with this, but I find it frustrating.
That was, the last one was really quite unique. There was previous rulings.
I mean, I understand why we were able to grant it and couldn't for these people. I just sort of, because of the historic nature of the barn, I wish somebody from the historic committee had more, what kind of input does that committee have?
So, let's, I think we're about to have the discussion.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, right.
And Charlie, and Charlie needs to.
Charlie needs to be fed.
Yeah, Richard needs to walk.
Motion for adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nanette.
Bye.
Happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, Judith.
Bye-bye. Bye.
Thank you.